Call the special meeting of February 3rd to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Before we get started, we'd like to welcome Chet to his first meeting and also Leslie to her first meeting. Thank you both. And thank Ron for an excellent interimship. Thank you.
Almost 100 percent. Almost 100 percent.
Special order of the day, Building Futures Fiscal Sustainability Program, next steps. Staff report, please.
So, council, first of all, thank you. This is the, I guess, the second bite of the apple with regards to the education on the fiscal sustainability program. Obviously, Eric's prepared to do a staff report, which I'll let him get to in a second, but did want to make some just brief comments before we start. The level of outreach that I've been looking at, that this council and the staff has undertaken in the last 18 months, I think is a really great indicator of where exactly local government is going and can go when there's a united voice about ensuring that the public is engaged. And so, I would just say and encourage the council and staff to continue down that road. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Eric. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. As Mr. Simmons mentioned, tonight is the second city council meeting we are holding for the specific purpose of fiscal sustainability. To preface this item, I'd like to provide a brief timeline of where we've been so far. In late 2018, the city began to focus on developing a plan for building future fiscal sustainability. And in January 2019, the city council hired David Kane as the fiscal sustainability manager. After that, city staff worked closely with the budget standing committee to identify, review, and evaluate different cost-cutting measures and revenue enhancement options. All of these ideas were presented to the full city council during the August 2019 meeting. During the summer and fall of 2019, city staff held five formal community meetings at the community center and local parks. Presentations were made to the planning, traffic, and recreation commissions, and city staff met with key community groups, including the Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis Club, Rotary Club, Senior Club, as well as city employee groups. In November of 2019, the city conducted a survey through the company FM3. This survey provides the city with a statistically reliable understanding of its residents' satisfactions, priorities, concerns related to the services that the city provides. At the last meeting, January 14th, FM3 presented the survey results to the full city council. In summary, the survey results show that there is strong support to maintaining current service levels and maintaining local control of public safety, with approximately 72% to 76% of voters supporting a measure on the November 2020 ballot to achieve these things. And that's kind of where we end up tonight. The survey results do show a positive support for a 1% sales tax measure to just maintain the current service levels. Another option for the city to consider is a 1.5% sales tax measure as well. This additional funding could provide for new capital, such as investments in the city's streets, parks, and buildings. It should be noted that there is a 2% cap on all additional sales tax for the cities. OCTA already has half a percent through Measure M. This leaves the city and any other taxing agencies the ability to pass local measures up to 1.5%, thus reaching the 2% cap. Other taxing entities like AQMD, different county agencies, and special districts could try to capture future sales tax dollars before the city does. There are four recommendations on tonight's agenda, mainly revolving around the 1.5% sales tax measure idea and the future of this community outreach. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to the city council for any direction or discussion items on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Any comments?
You said that there's a 2% cap. Where is that?
That's at the state level. It's in a state code that, you know, cities can't just tax and tax and tax away. So, for the sales tax code at the state level, cities or local agencies, counties, special districts can add up to 2%. I can provide that for you later, once I find where in the government code it states that.
I understand. Long Beach is at 10 and 1/4%, I believe.
Correct. They had a special case where they went to the state, and because they're such a big dog, they can, they went to the state and got a special dispensation for them to exceed that level. I think three counties or three entities have done that. Long Beach is one of them. It is possible for smaller agencies like us to do that as well, but for now, you know, we're abiding by this 2% cap.
Okay.
Does the city attorney have a comment on that?
Just to add to that, I can actually provide a direct citation if anyone's interested in the origin of that 2% limitation. That's California Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 7251.1.
Thank you. Anything else, Dean?
I do have another question. The idea of the consultant to go back out and survey again, is there funds available for that, or is this going to be an additional charge?
It would be an additional charge. We did the budget back in May and June of last year with the idea that one survey would be conducted, and that's what we just recently completed. So, any new future work that FM3 could possibly do would have to come back with a budget amendment.
Okay. You have no idea how much that would be?
It really depends. I would guess between 10,000 to 20,000, based on what they charged us for the first survey.
I have some other options that I'd like to discuss with the new city manager and directions that I was given from Chet, or not from Chet, I'm sorry, from Les, before he left. And so, there are another, there is another revenue option. Just, we have to work through it as a process, and it will require some background information, which is available, may be available through HDL. I don't know if it'll be an added cost or not, but the suggestion was to have you reach out to them, and I'll talk with you separately on that. I'm not sure that a second survey is going to change anything, and I don't know if the plan would be go back to the same 207 that responded the first time. I'd rather hear from 207 new people, frankly, if we're going to do it. I'm just not sure that it's a need to go back and do it. I think we have the ability here to make the decision based on the needs for the city, but if we do go to 1.5%, I'd like to make sure that we have some type of control mechanism over those funds, so that they're specifically held aside for the purposes for the increase and not just simply to add money to the bank. Thank you.
Tony, any questions?
No.
Shelley?
No, good.
No, Mark?
Thank you.
All right. So, just to confirm, the 2% tax law, it's got to have a better name than that, but the limit that was gone over by Long Beach and two other, were they cities, the other two entities, were they also cities that went over it?
I believe they were, but I'm not sure which ones.
Okay.
The... Because it's, I think what you're saying is it's possible they're at 10. What's Long Beach at? 10 and 1/4?
10 and 1/4.
10 and 1/4. Not because Long Beach increased it, but perhaps there's another special district or something like that.
LA Metro has a few sales tax measures, whereas OCTA has our Measure M, 1.5%. I think they have three or four different measures or propositions in their county.
Okay. So, maybe Long Beach is at the 2%.
What I'm getting at is, is if we go to the full 2% is used up, could an outside agency then request a higher tax?
To be honest, I think they're kind of testing uncharted waters. I know the AQMD has thrown out there a ballot or potentially looking for a ballot measure across multiple counties, but what's left to be seen and what's left to be flushed out really is, can they go into cities like Santa Ana, for example, who has used up their whole 2%?
Right.
And if, you know, other cities go for the 1.5% in Orange County, the full 2% is gone. So, the real question that needs to be flushed out is, can they even put a ballot measure that affects every city in five different counties, and that's still at the state level to be flushed out, if they can even put that on the ballot?
You have a feeling, Michael?
Yep. My thinking on it is that to go beyond that 2% cap would take some act of the legislature.
Okay. The other thing, too, mayor, is that we need to make sure and clear, especially to our residents, that any increase we add is money that comes directly back to the city. It doesn't go into the state portion or the sales tax portion. It's like Measure M that is kept here in Orange County and used for projects in Orange County. This would be money that is kept here in the city.
Yes, and that's the reason for my line of questioning was, you know, when we started out, I think Brett brought this to our attention, that we do have a structural deficit coming up, and he looked more at the immediate problem. You know, our pensions going up, that type of thing, and in a couple of years, we're going to be in trouble. So, to solve that, they came up with the 1%. I don't think at the time that it was thought all the way through. I know you and I independently came up with the thought that, why is the other half percent, why is it sitting out there? And my personal feeling is that if we know the citizens are going to get taxed within the next couple of years, that we should, we should be the ones to get that taxed. It's not like there's not going to be a tax. I'm almost certain that, given the state's desperate need for money and their inclination now to allow regional and smaller groups to start taxing, that it's just a matter of time till that half percent is grabbed by some agency. For that reason, I think we should entertain the fact that we might propose the whole percent and a half, and at least say, let's keep it in the city. If we're going to get taxed, let's keep it here. So...
I think we can rely on some additional time at this point. I think, was it July, that we have to make the decision in terms of it being on the ballot?
July 7th, yeah. So, really, June.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we can continue the discussion. I really want to flesh out this other opportunity.
Okay.
Because I think it will, it will be advantageous to us, but I don't want to stop the one, the half percent ad, because I think that, again, is, is something that we need to consider from the standpoint, I don't want to have to go back to taxpayers or have a future council go back to taxpayers in four or five years to get more tax money. We've seen what's happened in Seal Beach, and because of their size, they generated more money. The bulk of that, we're told, is, went to salary increases, and that means their retirement program is just going to be hit even harder, and they're going to be in a similar type situation of having to potentially go back and ask for more in the immediate future. And I believe Westminster is in the same kind of a situation, where their finances are going to be a problem for them, and they're one of the cities that passed the 1% back in 2016 or 2018.
I believe it was 2016, actually.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we're seeing the track record that's going, those that have gotten it already. I know Stanton was another one, La Palma was another one. We're going to have to just do what the citizens elected us to do, and that's make some hard decisions. We've already done that by reduction of staff, and are looking comprehensively at what other programs we can operate and fund at a more cost-efficient basis. So, I would, I would like to continue the discussion.
Okay.
Rather than firming something tonight.
You know, it's important to remind anybody who might be watching that, really, the decision we're looking at making is whether or not to empower citizens to vote on this.
Yes.
We're not going to say, this is it, and we're slapping a tax on you.
Yes.
We're going to say, these are truly the options. We can reduce services, or we can increase the tax, and what would you like to do? And to the citizens, now, my research has shown the cost of 1% for a family of four is going to be about $120 a year, which is $10 a month. It's not life-changing, but any time, you know, you hate to, you hate to tax more. I don't think any of us came up here for that, for that reason, but it, when you look at the numbers, you're left without too many other choices, especially because we've actually been well-run over the years, that we've cut our costs from 75 employees down to 50. We have tremendous staff, who's, many of them are wearing more hats than they should, and we're very fortunate to have that. But we're getting to the point where, if we don't get the new dollars, it is going to cost us at the city level, and since roughly half our budget is the police, there's obviously, there's going to have to be some changes there, too, if we, if we don't have the money. So, if everyone's in agreement, we will continue exploring this, bring it back, I believe, in the May meeting was the suggestion. And Eric, you want to talk about the capital improvement projects?
Yeah, so, recommendation number two is to direct staff to formalize a list of capital improvement projects and other services that could be addressed or implemented, should the community support a 1.5% sales tax increase. We put that recommendation there because, as I identified, the 1% sales tax maintains our current service levels. If we decided to go for a 1.5%, that could provide additional funding upfront that we could invest into streets, buildings, parks, vehicles, really get these facilities to where they should be, get the parks upgraded. And so, number two really just is a direction to staff to come up with a list of most important projects. An extra 1/2% sales tax would give us about another $1.5 million annually, based on current sales tax trends, so we could just identify those funds, put them into a separate bucket for, you know, special capital projects, identify between staff and city council's directions on what's most important.
Okay. It's open for discussion, but I, I agree with Dean. If somebody, if somebody voted, voted on the, on the survey, agreed that they'd go for 1%, I have a pretty good feeling they'd go for 1% and a half. We're talking probably a $60 difference. Any thoughts?
Yeah. I just, I've been talking a lot in my neighborhood, and I have a number of neighbors that are on a fixed income, and explaining the 2%, that 1/2% is already gone, and we don't really see in it, and it goes to OCTA. But, you know, my neighbors are saying, well, I don't ride the bus. I mean, they don't, they don't own it, where, when you explain, well, somebody's going to get that other 1.5%, whether it's AQMD, whether it's a new homeless tax, whatever, so let's just take control of it now, and say that 1.5%, we can guarantee that'll be poured right back into our city, to be able to use as we see fit for our city and not try to fund state or county programs. And every one of them was all on board, you know, explaining to them, you know, when the Upton people come in, that 600 new people during the day running errands and paying sales tax and helping fund that thing, and every one of them is like, you've got to get this on the ballot. So, I agree with you. I don't think the 1% versus 1.5%, as long as we can educate them why we're doing the 1.5%, because somebody's going to take that 1/2%, it might as well be us.
I might add, council, I'm sorry.
Please.
Just from the standpoint of public outreach, which I completely agree is something that we need to continue to ratchet up here in the next couple of months, we have a duty to ensure that the residents understand what the issues are facing the city, and so, like everything, you get a fresh set of eyes on things, and you start to kind of look at different avenues that we might want to take advantage of in order to make sure that everybody knows. That includes direct mail means, more community events, more mailers, more pieces on our website, in order to allow people to have this information, so that they're better armed when they need to make a decision about it. And that's something that I'd like to actually start pushing forward here in the next couple of months.
We'd be happy to give you till March to solve all the financial problems. Take the whole month.
I think, too, the, one of the other discussion points here was the hotel occupancy tax, which affects people that are staying in town, but not necessarily living in town. We're extremely low, I believe we're at 6% or 7%.
Eight.
Eight?
We're at eight.
We're at 8%.
And the average is 12.
And the, and the average is 12, yeah. And I know there was some discussion about putting both on the ballot at the same time and potentially confusing. I know that Stanton recently just put two measures on, one of them dealing with the ability to tax marijuana businesses. They have the same prohibition that we do, but they believe that the state's going to come down and tell us, we don't have any choice. And if we don't have that provision in place before that, then the tax money goes to the state. We're going to, we're going to fight hard to keep the marijuana aspect out of town, but they passed that overwhelmingly, and they also passed an increase in their hotel occupancy tax. So, I, if we're, if we're going to go here, I kind of feel like we need to put both out there and, and explain what it happens. You know, the, the information we've been given on the Marriott that's going up on the Boulevard is that we will generate, we expect to generate a minimum of $275,000 a year in new revenue, and that's sorely needed from the standpoint of basic services, the police, the vehicles, training. There's constantly more training coming down. Councilmember Hasselbrink and I attended a session this past week from the League of California Cities, talking about the changes in, in training that are going to occur, and these, again, are mandated things. It just keeps our officers more proficient in the process, but that also costs money. And I think we need to be looking as far-sighted forward as we can, so, thank you.
You know, speaking of far-sighted, I really, that's why I think the 1% and a half will be looked back upon as, as being far-sighted, because much like people bring up losing the racetrack, if we, if we lose this 1% through inactivity, we're going to get criticized forever on that. People are, you know, say, what, were you asleep at the switch? Didn't you know any better? That, that type of thing. It hurts a little bit now, but I think in the long term, it, it's going to be looked back upon as possibly the right thing to do.
I would just like to echo what Shelley already said, because I started talking to, the first thing I did when I knew I was going to apply was looking at surrounding cities' sales taxes. And I was speaking to a Rossmore resident that I work with, and she was like, so what are you guys going to do? I hear you're going broke. I was like, well, no, this is a preemptive thing, and we're looking at increased revenue or an increased tax. Oh, well, no, if you tax, we'll just go somewhere else. Where are you going to go? Cerritos is nine, Long Beach is 10. Where are you going to go spend your money? She was like... So, really, it's education. If people understand you're talking about someone else can come in and capture funds, if they understand that the money is going to be allocated somewhere else anyway, and if they understand where that money is going, the importance of it, I watched them sign off on it for the school district. People just had to understand. So, the community outreach is imperative. I don't know how that works for city council people, but they love to bend your ear and ask you questions, and the more, I guess, as a united front and consistent our answers are, and they understand, they will gladly, because I will gladly sign off on 1.5% if it means not just maintaining, but excelling.
I think that's the difference. Yeah. Thank you.
So, just to give you my thoughts, too, I mean, I totally agree with the points you're making on the 1.5% sales tax, but before we were, we would do that, I'd want to be sure of two things. I would want to be sure, first of all, that it's going to pass, because...
Yes.
We need the 1% to survive as a city, and, you know, if there's any realistic risk of, of losing that by going for the extra 1% I'd be against it then.
I agree.
So, the surveys will hopefully help us with that. And then the other thing I'd want to be sure is that we won't still get taxed on top. I mean, we're saying we would do this because we're going to get taxed anyway, but I'd hate for us to, you know, put it to the voters. The voters take our word for it, they approve the 1.5%, and then the state of California, AQMD, whoever it is, then throw some more taxes on top of that. Then our residents are going to look at us and say, you told us you were taking it so that they wouldn't take it. And so, you know, I totally agree, the 1.5%, the city could certainly use money to maintain and improve our services, make our residents happy, keep it a safe community, great community feel, all of that. But those are, those are the two things that I would just want to, want to be sure of before we would go there.
We do have a few months to get a solid opinion on that, and, you know, and that's also subject to what the state does. They, they haven't asked us for too many thoughts in the past, they've just done what they wanted, and it's sad to see, see in a way, is, it just, money gets more desperate. You know, you just, you never know what they're going to do.
Well, they've taken the gasoline sales tax that was passed, and he, the governor, has attacked that money, as well as pension money, to go into his housing program and climate change. And so, you know, it becomes another situation, voters approve something for a specific purpose, and then all of a sudden, they seem to just be able to move it wherever they want to in Sacramento. We've not been that successful here, so...
I think we just need to, you know, educate as we're talking to people, and I'm, I'm going, you know, just talking to people, I'm not waiting for the glossy flyer and just having conversations with them and explaining them, and right now, there's a 2% cap. What's it going to be in five years? I don't know. But right now, we're trying to be the most prudent and grab up that 1.5% for La Salle. If it changes, then that's another, you know, bridge we're going to have to cross, but it's not going to be our doing. At least, we're going to try and at least capture the available tax money to come back in here, rather than going to Caltrans or AQMD or whoever it could be.
Agree. The other, I mean, the other point, I think Councilman Gross mentioned this, the TOT and the marijuana. I am concerned that if we put multiple tax measures on the ballot at the same time, that we're going to, we're going to dilute it, we're going to confuse people, we're going to give the impression that we're overreaching, that we're just going crazy, we've never done these, you know, we haven't had a TOT tax on in years. We, you know, we could have taxed marijuana before, we didn't, we didn't do that. And so, I would be worried, and I have a recollection, I don't remember if it was David Kane that told us this, or one of the other consultants, consultants that told us this, that if you put two tax measures on the ballot at the same time, you're risking both of them, because some people are going to vote for just one, and some people are going to vote for just the other one. You're not going to meet the threshold on either one then, and then you're in big trouble. So, I get it, and I agree, we have to address TOT, we have to address marijuana, but, you know, I would just be concerned, you know, we got to get this, we got to get this right if we're doing, if we're going this path with the sales tax, and make sure that we get it passed and get those funds, and don't go broke in two years or three years.
And I don't disagree. I just think that, that, you know, it's happening around us. We need to be aware of what other cities are doing and, and make sure that we're being as prudent in our process as well. I don't think, well, no, the hotel occupancy tax was part of the survey, and I don't remember offhand what happened back.
Yeah. And I'm sure, I'm sure the residents would support the TOT if we had just the TOT on there, right? It makes complete sense. It's just, and I don't know if the survey, I don't remember if the survey had both, if you do both at the same time, what the results would be, because...
I just think, I just think we need to focus all our efforts on this one, and then in the off-year, once the hotels open, then we have another story to tell about, now we've got a hotel as opposed to Don's Turf and the Best Western. Now, we've got something that's going to make a legitimate difference if we do raise the TOT to 10% or 12%, but right now, we need one, one unified message. This is going to get us to where we need, so we don't talk about, we don't use the bankruptcy or, you know, any of those words anymore, and now, how do we move forward in future ballots?
And we have a new city manager with a lot of experience in that whole arena. So I think giving him a chance to really get his teeth around what we've done and where we're headed is prudent as well. So, look forward to your input and direction.
And it's not, you know, it's not as if, even if we pass the sales tax, we're not going to suddenly give up our responsibilities for fiscal responsibility. You know, it's still going to be best practices that we can manage the money and get, bring the most out of it. That should not change. But the sales tax will get us down the road and sustain the life that people really love here. So, if I could ask, on the staff recommendation one, about the consultant, how does everybody feel about consulting, or is just more community outreach the way to go?
I personally have seen the benefit of, I'm a handshaker myself in every role I've ever been in. I've gotten much further. For example, when I host a meeting at my school, they send a blast, they put it in a newsletter, but I text people personally. It's the same copy and paste. I say, hey, I'd love to see your lovely face tomorrow, coffee's on me. They all show up without fail. It's that personal touch, I think, that will actually speak to people, so they know that we're vested and we care. It's not just another paper that you can ignore, or a mailer, or a flyer, or whatever. It's your council people really trying to communicate and help you understand what we're trying to do. So it's us, not just us.
Thank you.
No, I've been successful in that. I mean, I've had people come at me and say, oh, great, you're going to tax us again. And then when we actually had this interactive conversation, rather than just a door hanger, I was able to, fact from fiction, and within three minutes, it's like, oh, okay. And, you know, to be able to go into neighborhoods and host in houses, and, you know, get that FaceTime, I think is much more of a sell than any other thing. I mean, the other stuff's important, but I think we're small enough, we can do this. You know, and if we're really owning this, then I think it's on us to sell it, honestly. I mean, that's a bad word, but it is what we're doing. We've got to, I believe it, this is going to benefit the cities. So why wouldn't I go out to my neighborhoods and educate them about it?
I agree with that. But if you're asking about the consultant, I think, are you asking whether we should go forward and have the consultant do the survey on the 1.5%?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should. I mean, I think otherwise we're kind of guessing and extrapolating the data on the 1%. Maybe there's something magical about 1.5% where people say, no.
No, and I'd be for that. I think if we did that, it would have to be a very short survey, because one of the things that I did here is, the phone calls were 20 minutes, and they were long, and they wanted to know their ethnicity and their income, and how long they've lived here. And at this point, we don't care. We want to know, are you in favor of it? And 1% versus 1.5%?
Yeah.
And that's it. Just a real quick follow-up.
I mean, I think they're doing all that just so that they could come to us and say, this is statistically significant.
Right.
You know, otherwise, you know...
But I think we've been there, done that, and now we can just, as a follow-up, what do you think about this?
The same people.
Yeah. Well, I mean, those are the ones that responded. So I would think that it's a pretty high, you know, we might get some others, but at least the ones that did respond, a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
Narrowing it down would be important.
Eric, of the numbers that made up the 72% on the survey, how many people was that? 207 was the total number.
Yeah, of respondents that answered and gave...
Yeah. So about 150 were positive?
Yeah, correct.
Would it be possible to go out to the people who responded with a shorter survey?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely instruct the consultant to reach back out to these people. I don't know if we can get every single one of them, or if they may suggest a different sample size. But if they're already responded to a 20-minute survey, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to take another five, 10-minute phone call.
And I think that's important. I recently did a survey, and I really kind of hung up in the middle of it. We were like 15 minutes in, and I was like, oh, my God, you know? I thought they had two questions. So would a shorter survey cut the costs any?
I believe so. I mean, most of their cost is based on, you know, man-hours, man of the telephones, you know? How many questions do they need to formulate to really get to, you know, the answers that we're looking for? Yeah.
Could you come back to us with that cost at the...
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
At the March meeting?
Yeah, we'll reach out to FM3 and come back with a proposal of cutting the number of questions, and, you know, potentially reaching out to the same people. So maybe they already know demographics of these people that they're reaching out to, and that can lower the costs. So, yeah, we'll reach out and get a quote for you guys.
So right with my colleagues, if we table that for a month?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Any objections?
I'm not in favor of spending more money with the consultant. I didn't like his report the first time, and I didn't think he hit enough. And I would be, if the majority rules to go back and do it again, I would be opposed to going back to the same 207. You know, the basis being, or however many he went to, I'd go to a different demographic. Because he asked them a question, they gave him an answer. Now to come back and say, well, they now looking at 1.5%, how does that feel? And I would rather get that from somebody fresh, saying 1.5% is too much, and not having really had the questionnaire the first time about 1%.
So maybe Eric can get a couple of proposals from them?
Yeah.
To get some new survey results, versus going back to the original, versus a combo?
Yeah, when we did the original RFP for this, I think we reached out to a good handful, and we got three responses. So we can definitely go back out to that same pool and, you know, try to find other survey companies that may be able to give us good results as well.
And I'm not saying limit the survey just to those people. I'm just saying that they're likely that you'd want to touch those 207 people because they were willing to answer the first time.
So, Council, if I can. So typically, whenever these firms go out and do their surveys, it's based on a pool of applicants that they ask the questions to. It's not usually, we know that person A, B, C, and D are the ones that are going to respond. And so those are the people that we actually are going to ask the questions to. They tend to open these questions up to a large spectrum of people in order to be able to give you a very good snapshot of what exactly your community is thinking. So while the 207 people that were originally surveyed and did respond will be in that pool, they will be asking these questions of a larger group of people as well. That's typically how they go about it.
Okay.
Can we also do something, maybe a little bit more grassroots as well? I mean, you can do surveys on Nextdoor, and you can limit it to where it is. You can do town halls in certain communities, maybe at the Royal Oak, where they have a community there with a community center, you know, and hit those 100 addresses there, and hit people in Parkwood and very, you know, I'm willing to go in my neighborhood and have different, you know, home surveys. And it might not be as official and professional, but we're getting the same feedback. And then based on all that, I mean, we've got to use the grassroots stuff as well, too.
Along those lines, I would think that, you know, like, the chamber meeting, or the Rotary meeting, those would be excellent opportunities to go in and be able to ask those groups who really are invested in the community, you know, what they think. Michael, a question on recommendation number two. My understanding that if you specifically put where the money's going to go, you have to reach a higher threshold. Is that true, first of all?
Yeah, if the receipts of the tax, as it were, are allocated for a specific purpose, that's a special tax, which requires a two-third voter approval, as compared to a general tax, which is a simple majority of the population. So by earmarking funds specifically, you do need to meet a higher threshold. Now, having said that, it's not uncommon at all for cities to identify what their funding priorities will be with a general tax, including public safety and so forth. But that's not the same as earmarking it and essentially creating a special tax category.
Yeah, I think it was Laguna Beach that was, they were going to take the sales tax money and do underground utilities, and it failed. And if they would have just said, we'd like to do underground utilities, but it's going to go in the general fund, they would have only need 50 plus one.
Okay, so just a question of wording it correctly?
To set up a citizen oversight committee for just information, rather than setting it specific, but to get some of the larger expenses fed back through them. You know, maybe capital improvement, is that the same thing?
Well, I think, if I'm reading the recommendation correctly, I would see no harm with having staff provide additional information, capital improvement projects that would benefit from additional revenue in the city. I think the city, in the past, has deferred some projects based to budgetary constraints. So this would, by my reading of it, and I could be wrong, this is just additional educational outreach of understanding what could be prioritized if the city were in a better position to allocate resources to these capital improvement projects, as opposed to saying, a vote yes on this measure means...
It will do this.
This will happen at City Hall.
That's the two-thirds vote.
And it's also something we're going to cover in the budget process in March, April, and May, anyway.
You're exactly right, sir. So the opportunity here is for us to really take, again, with a fresh set of eyes, and take a look at our facilities and say, what are the things that we would do if we could do them? And so, I don't think, along with our city attorney, that it reaches the threshold of, well, no, you have now earmarked these funds, and so now you meet the higher voter threshold. This is purely information for both the council to deliberate on when we get to budget time, and then also for the community to understand some of the needs that we see going forward.
Okay. So I'll make a recommendation here, that we table recommendation number one till the next meeting, actually, the March.